Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bill Iams and I'd like to welcome you to this forum. We're privileged to have this affiliation with Miracosta College. And I am part of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. I'm a member. And I'm very fortunate to be with a group called the Backpack Committee, which stands for the Business and Community Political Action Committee. And what's so great about the Backpack Committee? They like to take issues which are important to all of us and make sure we have a full understanding of everything so that when we are about to select a candidate, the selection is made not only on the brief summary that they've put about themselves or someone has put about themselves in the newspaper or any other publication, but by the responses to questions which will be asked of them. And none of these questions have they been prepared for. So we hope they know the answers. And if not, we'll see how good they are at creativity. But at least we'll get a good insight to how they will conduct themselves in this particular position. And we're very fortunate to have seven people vying for two positions. So we've got great choices across the board and we hope that you have an opportunity to develop your opinion of whom you will be voting for at that particular time. This is a wonderful room in which to conduct this particular forum. And we are so appreciative of Miracosta College. And to tell you a little bit about the school and to officially welcome you, we'd like to present you with the Superintendent and President of Miracosta College, Dr. Francisco Rodriguez.
Hi. When I started this, everybody, welcome, 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 welcome to Miracosta College, your community college. We're so happy that you're here this afternoon joining us. We welcome the candidates who are here for this forum. And I'm particularly pleased to welcome you on behalf of our Board of Trustees. Trustee Fisher is here. I don't know if there's anyone else from our board is here. Our faculty, our students, which today number 18,000 students.
Wow.
18,000 students over three campuses, the Community Learning Center and this campus in Oceanside and in Cardiff are San Eliejo campus and through a growing online education program. I'm also very pleased to extend the legacy of Dr. John McDonald, who as you know, went from his presidency here to the City Council and then to the county supervisor role. So a person whose legacy to this day continues. So we have as fitting a tribute in this room. It was in 1961 that we moved from and began the process of moving from the Oceanside Carlsbad Junior College, a wing. We'd begun classes there in 1934, began with 122 students. In 1961, the community saw fit to purchase a property through the passing of a bond. Then 1964, opened this beautiful campus with 600 students. Today, three campuses and several thousands of students later, we continue that legacy and we continue to serve this region very, very well. We're happy to welcome all of you here. We so much enjoy our partnership with several civic organizations and city entities throughout our region that we serve, but in particular with the city of Oceanside and with the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you so much and welcome. This is your college. Please make yourselves at home while you are here. I've got another commitment, but I did want to extend my welcome on behalf of everyone here at the college. We're so glad that you're here. Enjoy yourselves. The council candidates, welcome to Miracosta College. Thank you.
Well, that's great. We really appreciate that. And earlier today, we had another forum which featured candidates for the Tri-City, excuse me, for the Miracosta College Board of Trustees. And so we are going to have this next 90 minutes with you so you get an opportunity to select your councilperson to represent you. Okay, a couple of things. First of all, we are so fortunate to have this wonderful panel of candidates for this. And they are seated not according to our choice, but according to their position on the ballot. So for example, Dana Corso is the first name that you will see on the ballot and that's why she is first going left to right. And so we have Dana Corso, David Zernick, Esther Sanchez, Donald Snyder, Jimmy Knott, Chip Dykes, and Jack Feller. And we will be asking them questions in different order. So we'll tell you the question, we'll tell you who is going to answer the question and so forth. And I am so pleased that you're all here and we have a great opportunity to find our next two members of the Oceanside City Council. I will tell you that these questions have been provided by citizens. We have asked for questions. We've gleaned some questions from their ballot statements. And we've taken a look at issues which are a concern to all of us and have come up with some questions. I am the questioner general. I just gave myself a title since they didn't give me any money. And I have not necessarily written the questions, only the ones which lack. The others have been written by others. And we are fortunate to have members of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce here who have really put this together. And as you know, the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce is one of the finest business organizations in San Diego County. And in this particular situation, you often find when you're about to vote and select your next representative, gosh, you've got seven choices and only two positions. How do you choose the best? And the best way is to find them answer spontaneously questions which they may or may not have been prepared for. At least we haven't had any leaks go out, so they have no idea what these questions are. In fact, I don't know what some of them are as well. And so it's going to be entertaining and interesting and we hope it will help you solidify the person whom you believe will be best able to serve you or maybe even change your mind a little bit. So thank you very much. It's all about you and it's all about them as well. And so we're going to go ahead and begin. Now, our questions are generally 90 seconds in length. And so you don't have to look at your watch while you're answering the questions. We have a timekeeper general. And that's Mr. Jerry Salier, who happens to be the Chair of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. And he has applications for any of you who wish to join in his satchel right there.
They're going fast.
And so they're going fast. And he has a card. May I borrow this a second, please? This is the official timekeeper notification. So in a 90-second question, at 60 seconds, you're going to get a green light. That means you've got 30 remaining. When you're done, it turns to red. And then if you don't leave, we have a hook, don't we, that we can use to fill them off of the counter? So we're going to start with our first question and we're going to start with Jack Feller. Once again, you'll have 90 seconds or less to answer this question. Jack, in your ballot statement, you indicated that the private sector is the ultimate job creator. What specifically will you do about attracting the private sector to create more jobs in Oceanside?
Thank you. I believe that, as it stated, the private sector does handle the majority of the jobs. Government was not created to create jobs. And so as much as I can and have done for 12 years, attracting everything from the biotechs to, you know, anything that would be considered job-related, hotels. I've committed to the Economic Development Department to go to any and all visits or conventions where they may need somebody to staff their booth. Oceanside has just spent too many years on the back burner, pushed aside many opportunities for these jobs in the past 50, 60 years. And when you're 125 years old, you need to take advantage of every opportunity.
Thank you very much. Chip Dykes, your ballot statement reads, "We should enhance the needs of the community and make our wonderful city a business-friendly environment. With the right legislation and limited government control, Oceanside will prosper." How do you propose that government control be limited?
I would suggest, the first way that I would suggest limiting city government or government control was to ensure that city employees understood that their elected officials have their back and they're supported all the time when they're doing their job. At that point, I think with that confidence in the city employees have that their elected officials have their back, that they then would be free to do their job unencumbered and that would also enhance the business profile of our city. And it would give them a chance really to look at the processes and ensure that we are not overburdening or having redundant systems or outdated systems as we look at the process of whether it be a business license or a business permit or even a permit to build a building in Oceanside. So it's building that confidence in city employees that we got their back.
Thank you very much. The next question is for David Zernick. The most pronounced issue in your ballot statement is to create jobs. You speak of providing incentive investment opportunities for our citizens. What kind of investment opportunities do you have in mind to accomplish this? David?
Beautiful. Thank you for your question. There's a lot of people in Oceanside that would like to invest in our community. And many people that live in Oceanside know this because when they drive around town, they see a lot of project application signs, there are those yellow signs for construction projects. Now, a lot of these signs have been there for five, six, seven, eight years. So there's a line of people who would like to obtain a building permit in our city. And the city has not issued them a building permit just because the city's making it too hard to get those permits. So what I would like to do is make it a lot easier to get a building permit and that would create a lot of jobs for the people of Oceanside.
Thank you very much. Dana, the next question is for you. In your ballot statement, you mentioned a group called Action, of which you were president two years ago. You stated that you united 42 neighborhoods. Which neighborhoods were included in the 42 and how were they united?
Well, we started Action about two years ago. And initially, it was because of my neighborhood. Jeffrey's Ranch was impacted by the widening of 76. They closed down one of our main entrances to our neighborhood, Jeffrey's Ranch Road, and the neighbors were outraged for safety purposes. And so Councilmember Sanchez and Mayor Wood helped me organize the neighborhood and get people out to the City Council to help try to reopen the road. While we were down there, we met other people that were affected by different issues. I think it was the coastal issue. They had raised the building heights from 27 to 32 feet. People were upset about that. And then there were the harbor issues. They came forward because the boating fees were tripled. Most recently, the mobile home communities, family communities, they were, we had over 300, 400 people at the council. May 5th last year, 2011, the chief for the fire department, we couldn't even get everybody into the room. These people were seniors and veterans fighting for their homes. And again, the council majority went ahead and put it on the ballot. We got six, over, well, less than 16,000 signatures in less than, or we got over 15,000 signatures in less than 30 days. And they still chose to put it on the ballot. So with all of the neighborhoods that joined Action, we got out and we walked to all the neighborhoods. We informed them, we educated them what this was about. Proposition E, Proposition F was also thrown at us in February with no citizen input. There's a lot of people that are upset. And so we're delighted that we won Proposition, that we defeated Proposition E and F in June. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jimmy Knott, you indicated in your ballot statement that we should decentralize city government. What do you mean by decentralized city government?
Very simple is that city government right now is where, somebody have the...
So he's buying drinks.
Oh, okay. City government right now, there's too much power with making decisions with downtown. And there's a neglect of issues and concerns within the other communities. If you look at the allocation of the budget, now I've sat down there for 15 years at the City Council and seen the budget and the way it's been allocated. There is ignorance of a lot of communities towards the east. It's like they dominate downtown. And then there's a few little small communities that seem to get all the money and all the services. And that the other areas in the city are sort of like orphaned children. What they need to do is reimpose some sort of decentralization or empowering of each of the communities. The police department and everybody seems to recognize that there are central townships within the city of Oceanside. If we would take each of those towns, empower them like say with their own little council or planning area and give them a certain amount of power and empower the people to make the decisions, we could take and very simple, create a new type of government that would be serving the people from the bottom up.
Great. Thank you. May I have a red, green card, please? Okay, Esther Sanchez, I have a question for you. In your ballot statement, you said, and I quote, "I brought 24 million and zero waste to Oceanside and soon will bring $100 million in jobs and infrastructure improvements." Where do you see the $100 million in jobs and infrastructure improvements coming from?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to respond to that question or to respond and to explain. Because of my unique position as a coastal commissioner, I've learned a lot about rules, coastal rules and development. And also from my, based on my years on the Council and on the Buenos Aires Lagoon Joint Powers Committee, I actually am able to see, to make things happen. First of all, with respect to the Public Works Plan that is, that is for the I-5 widening. I was able to, as a council member and Joint Powers Committee member, expand it to include the Buenos Aires Lagoon and the I-5 widening. And to make sure that these projects were in there, I've seen mitigation funds, $50 million, go south. There is a potential for $150 to $200 million to stay in North County and I intend to make sure that that happens. And the way to do that is to work with the cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Sandag. And so I have been able to meet with the mayors of Oceanside, Carlsbad, and also the Chair of Sandag. And we are making sure that this is going to happen. And keeping that money in North County means jobs, means infrastructure. That's going to include the coast highway improvements between Oceanside and Carlsbad.
Great. Thank you very much. And Donald Snyder, your candidate statement was not specific. In fact, it was mostly blank in this particular category. So I'd like to ask you a question, if I may. Since Oceanside needs money to maintain the city as we desire, how will you encourage businesses to open in Oceanside so that we may benefit from increased revenue?
Okay, well, I graduated from Oceanside High School and we used to walk down from my house down there. We didn't take the bus. And there's a bunch of businesses there ever since I've been there. If you drive by those right now, they're empty. There used to be the Pizza Hut, there used to be the Kmart, used to be all this other stuff. Now they're either empty businesses or they're little shops and most of them are closed. We're letting people go and we're not giving them an opportunity to come into this community because we're not opening enough businesses and we're not asking people to come in and do that. What we need to do is make it easy for businesses to come in, either give them reduced rates or anything like that that we can get to attract businesses. Right now, we're not doing that. And we need to get businesses to come in here so without a business, you don't have a job.
When you say reduced rates we give them, are you speaking of the building owners or the city?
I would imagine the city would be able to do that because if you have, if you have at least a little bit less that you're bringing in, it's better than not bringing in any money at all. All those businesses that are sitting there empty are not helping us at all. And the business owner that used to have that is still paying for that. So it'd be a win-win if you can get the place set up.
Great, thank you. And that's a segue to our next series of questions. In front of each of you, there's a business card and a marking pen. Does anybody not have the, excuse me, index card or marking pen? Does everybody have them?
Yes.
Yes, does anybody not have them? I guess that's what my question was. Everybody has them, okay. Now, you see the way I've written a number on here? That could be a six or it could be a nine, you know? That's how large I'd like you to write this next number. I would like you to estimate, from your knowledge of the community, what is the vacancy percentage, the percentage of vacant businesses that have storefronts on coast highway in Oceanside? That goes from the lagoon to the harbor. What percentage vacancy do you think we have? And by the way, I'm going to give you a hint. The average in San Diego County is 11.3%. And, excuse me, 11.9. And they anticipate it'll be 11% by the first quarter of 2013. So I'd like you to write down the number that you believe best represents the vacancy factor of storefronts on coast highway, that's both sides of the street in Oceanside, from where the city begins at the lagoon to where it ends at the harbor. Just write a number and I'll tell you when to put the cards up. Does anybody need more time?
My marker doesn't work.
Well, we can resolve that. We provide service.
David's going to let me use his. Thank you.
Okay, I thought that was a pretty good technique. Oh, no, it's blank, but it's, oh, that's a, you know, whatever. Anyway, okay, everyone, please hold up your cards. Okay, now since my eyesight isn't that great, we've got 15, 18, 29, 30, 15, 10, and 20, which is a pretty great spectrum between 10 and 30%. And it's interesting because I did a survey. And just in case you want to know the answer, it's double what the county is. The county is 11.9% and it's 22-point-something percent. Now, this is not a scientific survey. It's driving by and full, empty, and so on and so forth. There are 255 storefronts in that particular area and 57 of them are vacant. And some of those buildings may be as large as the old Blade Tribune building with mega square footage, or it could be Little Mom and Pop Jewelry Shop, but we still count them as one particular number. And that really shows that the community has twice the vacancy that the rest of the county does in that particular area. Which leads to the second part of the question. If you were a new business considering relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice? Dana?
Well, I would say that Oceanside is a large town, but it has a small-town feel. We have a great Chamber of Commerce. We have newspaper. We have the mayor that works very well for the people and the businesses. We have fabulous safety services that keep our crime rates down and therefore I think would make Oceanside, the quality of life would be higher, which would make Oceanside a very good place to raise, to run a business, start and run a business.
Great, thank you very much. Esther, would you please answer the same question? If you were a new business considering relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice?
Well, first of all, I think because of the times, it would be important to, the decision would be, it would, excuse me, it would be important to know whether or not it would be a city that I'd want to live in as well, to cut down on the traffic. And so Oceanside is a diamond in the rough. The quality of life is something that we all appreciate. The crime rate has gone down, what is it, over 30% in the last, 30%, excuse me, has been the best in 30 years. In other words, it is the lowest in 30 years. We have a beach that does not, that, there's no rival to it at all. We have wonderful business community. Small businesses in Oceanside have been the backbone of the economy here in Oceanside. And we've got great schools, great parks. We have the Oceanside Museum of Art. We have a lot of really wonderful cultural institutions and people and communities. And I agree with Dana that it's the community, it's the people that make Oceanside great.
Thank you very much. Jimmy, I'm going to ask you the same question now. If you were a new business considering a relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice?
We have a great diversity within the city. In fact, the best, I think, within the county for all our races, cultures, and ethnicities. We also have the target, the group are economically is mainly upper, lower, and lower-middle classes. And that's the way it's been for almost the entire history of our city. We're close to Camp Pendleton for their services and also for our veterans. And I would have to take a difference with Councilmember Sanchez. According to the mid-year 2012 statistics published today, we've had a 5% increase in crimes across the board.
Thank you. Jack, I'd like to have you answer the same question. If you were a new business considering a relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice?
I believe at this point, we have a city process that has been much friendlier in the last several years toward those businesses. And when you make, I mean, there are people in this room that know that they had a difficult time, but a fair time at our counter. And I would trust that if the process is fair, this city has a great opportunity with business. And I speak from experience in that regard. But you have to rely on what the council, the city staff, and the people that can help you through your process, you have to rely on them to create that want to be here. And we've worked pretty darn hard at making that much better. I think the citizens are very, very satisfied with what's going on.
Thank you very much. Dave, I'd like to ask you the same question. If you were a new business considering a relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice?
I'm sorry, were you asking me?
Yes, Dave.
David Zernick?
Yes, we have one, Dave, right?
Now, I thought you said Don, but thanks for asking that question. The thing about Oceanside is, it's wonderful. We've got everything. We've got a military base right next door with tons of jobs. We've got the best waves around. The weather's perfect. And the most important asset we have in our city is the people. We've got the best people on earth right here in Oceanside. That having been said, we still have problems in Oceanside. We've got homeless people and every year, there's more homeless people. We've got joblessness. Now, Esther Sanchez just said that the crime rate was down 30% just a minute ago.
30 years.
Now, we get about four murders a year in Oceanside and it's just unacceptable. We need to take action immediately to reduce crime because over the last 12 years, it's gotten worse. And the goal is to have a murder rate in Oceanside of zero. That's our goal. And there's no reason we can't achieve that. The next thing was, it's hard to open up a business in Oceanside and we've got to encourage that. So I disagree with the incumbents here. It's very important that we make it easier, we make it easy to start a business. It's hard to open up a business in Oceanside right now.
Thank you very much. Chip, I'm going to ask you the same question. If you were a new business considering relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice?
If I was going to open a business in Oceanside, I would take a look at the city and compare it to the other cities around San Diego County. And if you take Oceanside and compare it to the 18 cities in San Diego County, no other city, aside from San Diego proper, can boast what Oceanside does. We've got a pier, we've got a beautiful beach, we've got an airport, we've got a museum, we've got our own college, we've got our own hospital, we've got a historic mission that's being refurbished. We've got a vibrant downtown that's picking up the pace with new business coming in downtown to include the Spring Hill Suites that's going to start here real soon and future development that's really going to liven up the downtown. Oceanside has been up and coming and I believe it's arrived. And anybody who would want to come to Oceanside, this is a great time to get in.
Thank you very much. And Donald, we'd like to hear from you. If you were a new business considering a relocation to one of San Diego's north coastal communities, why should you make Oceanside your first choice?
Yeah, I hate to go against everybody else, but as it stands right now with Oceanside, it wouldn't be my first choice. You have too much stuff downtown that you have to pay for parking where, say, next door to us in Carlsbad, you don't. They attracted a lot of businesses that Oceanside over the years decided not to have. Car Country Carlsbad, the Costco. We've continually said, no, we don't want any of these businesses. We've continually said, no, we don't want any of these businesses in here. The mall at the Plaza Comino Real, we let that go. We've let a lot of businesses go. And like you said, you know, I'm a little bit over, but you said 22 percent of downtown right now is vacant, and there's got to be a reason for that. And it's got to be that we are not trying hard enough to get these businesses here. If I was looking for a place to relocate, I would drive down to Oceanside before opening my business and wonder why all these storefronts are closed, and wonder why I would want to put my business in there when potentially, it's going to be gone after a year or two.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question is going to be the same question for each candidate. You'll once again have 90 seconds, and I'll read the question before you get a chance each time to respond. There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside? And I'd like to start with Dana.
Well, excuse me, I don't believe in outsourcing. I think it's imperative and critical to keep all of our jobs in Oceanside. Today, there's an article in the newspaper that they want to outsource the harbor as well. I think this is ridiculous. I think that there's been studies that have been done that prove that when you outsource, it actually costs more money. And so, my answer to outsourcing is absolutely not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And David, I'd like you to respond. I'll read the question again. There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside? David?
Okay, this is a great question, and it's so important that the actions of the council, the feedback from the council, match the performance of what's going on with the city employees. Let me give you an example. The library's doing an excellent job for our citizens, and they've done so for many years. They're very popular. The idea of outsourcing there is unimaginable. If it's not broken, why change it? Now, there are some other departments that aren't doing so well, so they need to get up to snuff and improve. If they can't do that, that would be one of the options that might be available. But generally, I oppose outsourcing.
Thank you very much. Esther, it's your turn. There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside?
Well, first of all, in the last few years, City of Oceanside has actually cut, what is it, 150 employees. We've become much more efficient. Outsourcing only makes sense if the quality of the service is either the same or better. And in this case, and the things that you've suggested, the service would not be. For example, we have an excellent fire department that has paramedics, not just emergency techs that can just give you a pill, you know, an aspirin, and that's it, and then a very expensive ride to the hospital. Our citizens depend on having a good police-fire. We should not ever consider outsourcing police-fire, because what we have done in Oceanside is created the best police department, the best fire department. I've been asked questions, or it's been suggested, I'm not really aware of what the crime rate is being in Oceanside. I've lived in Oceanside all my life. We had a terrible, terrible crime rate. We had upwards of 15 homicides a year when I was growing up in Oceanside. They found bodies underneath, under the pier. We have a tremendous, better quality of life in Oceanside, and it's a great city. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Donald? There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside? Donald?
I don't think we should outsource, because it winds up being more money than what you're paying right now. For example, I, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, I'm in a union, and when our company went half and half, some are union, some are not, you look at what it is, and basically, my guys that are in the union are paying another company to do the same job as the company is doing for themselves. So we're paying other people to basically tell us how to do this. And so, I'm paying somebody else's salary when it could go to me and to my fellow employees. And that's the same thing if you're doing it at Oceanside. If you send it out to somebody else, they're going to have their own people, they're going to charge you extra money for having their own people. So if you have 50 people on your side, then they're going to have 70. I don't see where the savings ever is going to come to your side.
Thank you. Jimmy, it's your turn, and I'll read it again. There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside?
For city government, it's a complex issue. Because you have with it the budget. And the budget that's involved, if you have a certain amount of threat that's involved, like say, if the state comes in again and decides it wants to take, let's say, $20 million from our general fund, we're going to be put into really a crunch. And I believe that employees at that time need to have a choice and be put on equal footing, let's say, with an outside group or agency, if that's a choice of the city council at that time, that we have to open the door for competitiveness. But if we have a contract already with employees, we shouldn't break contracts. Because what that does, it opens the door for all contracts that we have with anyone, and that creates a problem. Because if we had start breaking contracts with employees, it tells any other vendor, we're going to break your contract. And that's not right. We have to be basically, look forward. Like, as an example, myself, years ago, I stood forward and I said, we need to bifurcate our ambulance service because of cost for the taxpayers. The non-critical care ambulance transportation should be able to be contracted out.
Thank you very much. Chip, it's your turn. There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, you'll never hear me use the word "outsource", because it sounds like you're sending a firefighter to India, and that's not what we're trying to do. I like to prefer to use the term "public-private partnerships", because that's what we're looking for. I'll start out with the two most important that everybody's concerned about, and then go on record as saying, I am against outsourcing the police department, and I'm against outsourcing the fire department. Now, if you want to talk about regionalizing ambulance services, that's a different story. And we could talk about that on a different day. That's probably a much better approach, but I'm against outsourcing both of those. When it comes down to it, if we've got five tax dollars to spend, and we've got to decide on what five things we pay city employees to do, we take the police and fire as the first two as our number two, one and two priorities, and spend a dollar each on one of those. Now, we've got three to deal with, and we've got to figure out who's the next top three priorities. Oh, by the way, there's another 10 services that got to be provided. If the city can't afford to pay them, we should definitely take a look at the way to have a public-private partnership. At a minimum, take a look at it, but never take anything off of the table by saying I would never do it.
Thank you very much. And Jack, I'm going to ask you the same question, and would love to have your answer. There has been a great deal of talk recently about outsourcing functions currently performed by city staff, such as fleet maintenance, street sweeping, tree trimming, ambulance service, and even police and fire services to private businesses in the area. What do you see as the role of this type of outsourcing in the future of Oceanside? Jack?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to clearly state that I'm against outsourcing police and fire services. Every service that we provide is not cut and dried as far as the public-private partnership. The harbor is an enterprise fund that is, has a possibility of operating on its own, being managed on its own. It doesn't mean we lose all those employees necessarily, but it is a management process, and I think that is a possibility as we go forward. But every issue is not cut and dried for me as far as the term "outsource". The term "public-private" is a better term to discuss the opportunities that may save us millions of dollars. Our major, the major gorilla in the room is pensions and benefits. And if we don't figure out something for pensions and benefits, there will be more than just public-private partnerships.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question. Donald, I'm going to start with you. And the question is, if you had a perceived quality of life issue facing you where your decision will benefit the residents of the city as a whole, but will negatively influence or impact a specific neighborhood, how will you balance those interests?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Let me repeat it again. If you had a perceived quality of life issue, this is facing you where your decision will benefit the residents of the city as a whole, but will negatively affect a specific neighborhood, how will you balance that interest?
Okay. I cleared it up. So basically, you're saying is if something that I wanted to do, and it's going to help out my neighborhood, but affect somebody else's neighborhood?
Not quite. I'm going to paraphrase this just a little bit. Let's suppose there's an issue that if it is passed, and you have to make a decision on it, if it is passed, it will be a very positive thing for the City of Oceanside. But there's one neighborhood specifically, a small section of Oceanside, it will negatively affect. How will you balance the concerns of the entire city compared to concerns with a very small section of the neighborhood?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out how, I'm trying to figure out how, if it's good for just about everybody else, why it would affect a small section of people. Yeah, I just, it just seems if it's good for Oceanside, and if you go by percentages, you'll say 90 percent of the people are going to benefit from this. The 10 percent, you'd have to either try to get on board, or find out exactly what the problem is with them. And it'd be great if I had a specific thing that I could go, okay, this is, you know, say it's free rides for everybody, or something like that. But I'm just not quite sure on that. Thank you.
That's okay. I appreciate your answer. Thank you. I'm going to ask the same question of these other six folks. Let's see how they do.
Thanks for going first.
Okay. And Jimmy, I'm going to read the question to you, and I'd love your answer. If you had a perceived quality of life issue, which, where your decision will benefit the residents of the city as a whole, but will negatively affect a specific neighborhood, how would you balance those interests?
I had a similar situation when I was Oceanside's representative on T-PAC, which is the North County Transit Citizens Representative Committee and chairman of it. I was given a choice, basically, to take and discontinue service for 5,000, well, 5,000 to 15,000 people, and increase it for 150,000 people. And that's a choice that was given to me, and it was basically put there for me to make, because it affected Oceanside. And I was sitting there, and they said, it's your baby. I had to take and make that decision, and I made the decision for the majority, even though I knew that there was a lot of people that would take and be hurt by it. But I asked at the time, is see what we can do to take and make up those people's service, if there is any alternative. And I asked Jack Feller at the time, who was our representative, if he could help along. And he did, and I have to compliment Jack at the time, that he did say that he would help along.
Thank you very much. Chip, I'm going to ask you that question. If you had a perceived quality of life issue facing you where your decision will benefit the residents of the city as a whole, but will negatively affect a specific neighborhood, how would you balance those interests?
I believe it's a role of an elected official to take an active leadership role in the community, and not just a decision-making role. So in that scenario, I would say, it's incumbent upon elected officials and city leaders to meet with the neighbors, explain to them the impact, most particularly on the affected, the negatively effective neighborhood, of the bigger plan of Oceanside and the bigger picture, and the things that may come out of that to help them. I couldn't imagine anyone making a decision that's just going to say, hey, sorry, you're left out there in the cold, and we're going to do this on this other hand. There's got to be some positive that came out of that, that we can pull out of it and relate to those neighbors, and ensure them that we're still there to support them as a community, as a city at whole, and we won't leave them out in the cold.
Thank you. Jack, I'd like to ask you the same question. Would you like the question read?
No, I think I've got it. The greater good of 180,000 people trumps most of the issues that we come across. You know, if you're talking about a light pole, that's one thing. But if you're for open roads, for freer flow, less government, you have to think about what is the greater good. And I've always felt that the greater good comes first.
Thank you. Dana, I'd like to ask you the same question. Would you like the question read?
No, thank you.
I think the audience appreciates you having me read the question again, too.
I think, most importantly, citizen input, and listening to the neighborhoods, of course. I think that we need to learn all the environmental issues, and get the city requirements, and then make the best-informed decision after we obtain all that information.
Thank you. David, it's your turn. Would you like the question read?
No, thanks. I really liked both Chip and Dana's answer. It's very important that everyone's needs get addressed and listened to, and on each side of any argument, everyone's need is important. That being said, if someone is impacted negatively, there's a lot of ways to mitigate that. There's a lot of real, you know, mitigations out there that are available, and it's, hopefully be an opportunity to build some consensus, to start a dialogue, really understand what everyone's needs are, and try to get things worked out. And Oceanside has so much potential. There's, you know, if one neighborhood's being impacted, there's a lot of ways to add parks in, to add, you know, to support architecture in the area, to add recreation centers. There's so much potential out there that we can do to make our city better. You know, I'm hoping that we can create kind of a win-win situation for everyone.
Thank you very much. Esther, would you like the question read again?
I think I can remember the question. Well, first of all, I don't think that in these days, that any decision affects only one community. It affects us all. And each community has a right to have its quality of life preserved. Now, Melrose Extension, for example, that would affect us all, not just that community that is nearby, that eminent domain that is possible there, that taking 15, the property of 15 owners away. That would create so much more traffic, cross-traffic, that would negatively impact the entire City of Oceanside. Now, there are some exceptions. For example, when I was working with the developer on the major shopping center over at the Old Drive-In Center site, that community was very concerned about all that traffic that would, that it would have to go through. Well, there was an ability for us to sit down, talk about it, and we ended up taking off the extension of Paula Road. And that clearly helped that community. That was going to benefit tremendously, and is going to benefit tremendously, our City of Oceanside. While that project got stalled because of the economy, it's now starting to go forward. So I had an opportunity to work that out and make that project happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have another question, and this one, Jimmy, I'd like to start with you, if I may. As a member of the Oceanside City Council, what would be the primary thing you would like to accomplish, and how would you do it?
Very simple. I would like to eliminate the bickering, the infighting, the acrimony. And I would like to see a new attitude, a compromise, consensus, amicable solutions. Because for most of the time that I've sat there in front, I've seen... Because for most of the time that I've sat there in front, I've seen a boat, like a boat shifting. One side comes in, and what happens is they take and they get, change everything. The other side comes in, they change everything back. And it's back and forth, and the boat doesn't seem to be moving ahead. We need to take and stop this bickering and fighting between the left and the right. We need some common sense insanity to move right ahead. And this issue of just constantly the left and the right fighting, that's the reason why I decided to run, is to take and bring this issue forward and ask people to take and please get some common sense. Please quit making it left and right. Let's look at the people's needs. Let's quit taking and arguing. Let's quit having so much acrimony on the council. It needs to stop. It needs to stop now.
Thank you very much. Chip, I'd like you to be next, and I'll go ahead and read the question again. As a member of the Oceanside City Council, what would be the primary thing you would like to accomplish, and how would you achieve it?
Well, I want to thank Jimmy for bringing up the left and the left side and the right side, because I've been dying to get this out and say, I'm not for the left side or the right side. I'm for Oceanside. But I think the -- I think I kind of fall in line with what Jimmy's saying is, we need to bring a bit of decorum to the way we run our city. And I think if you can bring that bit of decorum and a little bit of, a little more discipline, I guess is the term I'm looking for. I know a lot of people get afraid of that as a Marine when I say discipline, we're going to do push-ups or something. But a little more decorum in our speech and in the way we conduct our business as elected officials. And I think that translates to the staff, and they see that, that picks up their professionalism. And when that picks up, the citizens pick up on that, and it brings a whole new environment to the city. So I want to thank Jimmy for bringing that right out of the gate, but I think that's one of my, one of the key reasons that I'm running for city councils, is bringing just a little bit more decorum to the dice.
That's great. Yeah, it's kind of exciting to see these folks complimenting each other. I think they should all work together. Maybe we can get seven new members. Okay, Jack, I'm going to ask you the same question, if I may. As a member of the Oceanside City Council, what would be the primary thing you would like to accomplish, and how will you achieve it?
Thank you. I would, I really would like to see less government intrusion in all of our lives. That is key. We need to increase the ability to bring new projects, new people, new ideas into the city. Government needs to get out of the way. And I hope to continue the streamlining process that we have created downstairs. And that's a main focus going forward. I also, I'm very, very concerned about this uptick in crime. We went from 37 countywide, we're down about, or up about 5% as well as Oceanside being up that same amount. So we're still 32% better than we were in 2004. So Oceanside is a safe city. We have to continue that process and make it easier for people to do business here.
Thank you. Dana, it's your turn again.
All righty.
Would you like me to read the question?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I think it's important to put people first, to put the taxpayers, the constituents, the taxpayers first. Frankly, I've been at 90% of the council meetings over the past two years and have literally witnessed our council majority, Mr. Kern, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Feller favoring developers, big corporations, and big money. For instance, the toxic waste dump that they want to put at the San Luis Rey Riverbed. The Utilities Commission did a study. They paid an outside service to study it and found out that out of 100 sites, Oceanside, the San Luis Riverbed was 99 worst site, to put that. And the Utilities Commission said, no, the people said no, and yet the council decided to move forward with it. I think that's absurd. I think that we need to preserve and protect our best resources, and that is why I'm running. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. David, it's your turn, and I'll read the question again. As a member of the Oceanside City Council, what would be the primary thing you would like to accomplish, and how will you achieve it?
Thank you. I really liked what Jimmy Knott said and what Chip said. And again, I'm probably echoing what they're doing. I just want to list out some of my goals here. I want to improve the city. I want to lower water bills. I'd like to have more recreation, help the homeless, create affordable housing, friendly or public officials, improve people's life experience by supporting the arts, music, architecture, create jobs by encouraging investments here. And again, a part of your question was, how do we do this? And the fundamental way we do this is by having a government that encourages people, that helps people, that supports people. Be fair, care.
Great. Thank you, David. Esther, it is your turn. Would you like the question reread?
No, thank you. First of all, I'm going to follow what Dana, how Dana responded. I'm actually excited that we are in a position now in Oceanside to change the policies that I think have been against residents of Oceanside for the last couple of years and go forward in a positive, much more positive direction. We've seen a council that's willing to go after the homes of over 4,000 seniors and veterans. This has got to stop. What we need to do is start focusing on bringing more businesses to Oceanside. The emphasis has been on residential, and it is a developer community that is really driving Oceanside and the majority. We need businesses. We need to stop changing commercial land to residential. And this $100 million, that's what I want to do. I want to bring that to Oceanside. I want to make sure that our quality of life stays either where it is or even better. Now, when I went to the International Livable Cities Conference and also the League of California Cities, they talked about attracting businesses and how they do it. We need to do that as a council as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donald, I think you're the only one left on this particular question. Would you like the question reread?
Sure, you do it so well.
Thank you. As a member of the Oceanside City Council, what would be the primary thing you would like to accomplish, and how will you achieve it?
Well, I would hope that at the end of the tenure, people would say, you know, he actually helped Oceanside get back to a fiscal responsibility, that we created more jobs. We had a city council that agreed on things instead of sat in chambers and bickered the whole time. I've only been to the council a couple of times, but when I was there, that seemed to be all they were doing. It was three against two every time, and nothing gets done. I'd like to see some that are actually unanimous votes, and they vote the way that is going to benefit Oceanside and get us money here, new jobs, new people here, and make it a better city.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is going to be 60 seconds, and I'd like to start with you, Chip. What question do you wish I had asked you?
I didn't, I did not prepare for the non-question question.
Well, you can give an answer, and I'll create the question, so.
What do you, the question I wish you would have asked me was, what do you think about the different commissions we have around Oceanside? Now, you want me to answer that question? I thought you were going to answer that for me now. I think, I think commissions are vital to the way the city conducts its business. I think the commissions are very important, to be diverse with different people from different aspects of the city, both business and nonprofit. All walks of life should make up the different commissions that we have. However, we, it is incumbent upon the elected officials to trust in their commissions and go with the answers that commissions bring us. The time to bring information to a commission is while it's sitting there, not when they're bringing the answer to city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jack, what question do you wish I had asked of you?
The easy one would be, how many grandchildren do I have?
And your answer would be?
Almost 20. Is that the end?
No, I mean, you're welcome to say something.
I would ask, I would like to be asked, what projects and development that has occurred that is special to the bottom line of Oceanside?
And in your time remaining, can you, would you care to name a few of them?
I would. I'd like to name Moro Hills that I've followed completely, the terraces downtown, the Wyndham, the underpass that goes underneath the train tracks, the development that has occurred in eastern Oceanside. Just, I could go on, but there is millions of dollars.
Great. Thank you very much. Dana, you get to respond to the same question, which was, what question do you wish I'd asked you tonight?
Okay. How about, how can I help you with your campaign to get elected? Because clearly, you care about the city of Oceanside and the people and the constituents and the commissioners and all the decisions that are being made. You want a response? I can tell you my address, my campaign address, where you can help out at.
Dana, I make the jokes in this forum.
And have fun with this. Everybody said, "Have fun."
Yeah, and that's, this last question is intended to do that. I know David came in with a guitar, and I didn't know if he was going to sing his answers, but maybe speaking this next one. Which question do you wish I'd asked you, David?
I wish you'd asked me, what is the potential of the city of Oceanside?
And your response would have been?
And the answer is, the potential is very great, you know, that we have here. And I think one of the cornerstones is to increase the recreational opportunities for our citizens by expanding our parks. Having that available to people just increases their quality of life, reduces crime. I mean, happier people. Quality of life is so important to everyone. The other thing is to create jobs. People really want to invest here. People want to have a future here. And the message, it's very inexpensive for City Hall to send a message. The message should be, let's have investments here.
Thank you. Esther, would you like me to ask the question again?
No, I've got it.
Thank you.
Well, the question that I thought you were going to ask me is, why do I think I'm good for business?
If you wish that I had asked you that, that's my question.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, I think I've been really good for the business in Oceanside because I've been a moderator on the council. Even though I've been a minority member on the council, I've been able to reach out to a broad part of the community. It started with being able to get a compromise on our resort timeshare, our beach resort and our timeshare. There was not an appeal. We had been waiting for 30 years for that. I've been able to, because of that, we got El Corazon Park. I was able to push for the Oceanside Museum of Art expansion, the senior center, the major shopping center. I was able to get that to approval and lots of other things. I think that Google Maps in Oceanside, that's wonderful. I can do more. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Donald, it's your turn. What question do you wish I'd asked you?
The one that keeps popping up is, why are you running?
And your answer is?
Not a clue.
Okay, would you wish to embellish that, or?
Basically, I'm running because I used to teach martial arts at the San Luis Rey Resource Center, and it was closed due to budget cuts. And I've been doing that for 30-some years for free under privileged kids. And I wrote a letter to each one of the council members and asked them, you know, what happened. And they said, "We ran out of money. We're going to close a couple of things." I think they closed John Landis Park as well. And these kids need somewhere to go. They need somewhere to play. It's in a relative gang neighborhood, and we were out there to try to help them do something else, go to a different path. And now that's gone. And I wondered what to do, and that's why I want to run.
Great. Thank you very much. Jimmy, you're going to be the cleanup respondent to this particular question.
You got the mop in the bucket?
Yes, sir. That's your question, and your answer is?
Yes. Okay, what I would say is, is what would you do with the many corridor plans that we spent millions on and shelved? And the city of Oceanside has done that, and I have very simple, is I would take and set up authorities to implement the plans and empower the citizens and remove it from the council's hands. And doing such, let us, give the citizens an objective and very simply say to them, get it done. Council, take your hands off, get it done. And let the citizens that are on those authorities get those corridor plans done, and let it, the citizens in that community, get it done. Why should the council have control of everything?
Thank you very much. Okay, we have one more question that, which we will ask of you. And Jack, I'd like to start with you tonight. And the question is, what does eminent domain mean to you, and how do you see it being used to achieve the Melrose Extension?
Eminent domain is a taking for public use. In the only term I would use it. And as far as the Melrose Extension, I would be willing to bet that we will have friendly condemnation of the properties that are necessary for that Melrose Extension to take place.
Thank you. And by the way, I should have mentioned, and you have properly answered in the time limit, this is a 45-second response, and you've been well within that. Okay, the next person to respond to this question is going to be Dana. The question is, what does eminent domain mean to you, and how do you see it being used to achieve the Melrose Extension?
Well, I think eminent domain is awful, to take 14 properties at the expense of the taxpayers. It's going to cost 30 to 40 million dollars. It's going to take a portion of our park. I live in Jeffrey's Ranch. It's a rural area, equestrian development. There's sound walls that are going to be 10 to 12 feet tall to mitigate the sound. There are significant impacts that cannot be mitigated. The entire planning commission voted unanimously not to move forward with the environmental impact report, yet our council majority overturned that and is moving forward with it. You know, between the sound quality, the air quality, the traffic engineers, the city of Oceanside traffic engineers said that it would only benefit traffic by seconds. And so it is absolutely fiscally irresponsible for this council to move forward on a project that is so costly that will only benefit traffic by seconds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David, would you like the question?
No, thanks. I think I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, this is a weird situation. When I first found out about this project, I actually supported it, and then I did a lot more research into the situation that we have, and now I oppose it. What the city's proposing to do is, where this road is, has already been developed, and there's these huge warehouses and tons of development. And they're proposing demolishing a bunch of huge warehouses to build a road, and it just lacks kind of like common sense. So, you know, generally, we must build some more roads in order to alleviate traffic because everyone, or most everyone has a car. So right now, the city's not building a lot of roads. So I support road construction, just not this project.
Thank you very much. Esther, would you like the question reiterated?
No, I know the question.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm going to agree with Dana, and that cuts down like a few seconds there. And it means to me, it means the forceful taking of property from people. And 14 of those 15 property owners are against it. That means taking them to court, and we should never be doing that. This project will not decrease traffic for us. In fact, it will increase traffic. It will not increase the flow of traffic. It'll, in fact, make it worse. And that is what the EIR showed. So it is, it means something, it requires a supermajority. That's four out of five. Right now, that can't happen, and we've got to make sure that it doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donald, would you like the question reread?
No. To me, eminent domain, it means that you're taking something by force, whether the people want it or not. And it's happened in our community before, and they're trying to do it again. I don't believe, because I drive by that place to go play golf, and it doesn't, it doesn't seem like that's going to cut down anything from where you're driving. It's a rural area. Expanding that road doesn't seem like it's going to do a whole lot for anybody, and it's going to hurt a lot of people, so I'm against it.
Thank you. Jimmy, would you care to respond to that, please?
Yes. First is that when you do eminent domain, you're supposed to do it for the good of the public. I don't think the case has been made. And I think that the only people that really would benefit would be probably Vista and the people coming down from Riverside and going through that area, and maybe a few landowners that want to take and develop over in the distance area. But really, the rest of Oceanside and other people will not benefit. And the question is, what are the impacts of 76? What is the impacts of reduced public transit? What is the impacts of reduced public transit? What are the alternatives, and whose benefits? These have not been fully answered.
Thank you. Chip, and I believe you're the final one on this particular question.
The definition of eminent domain to me is, is the government's taking of property, of private property for the, for the greater good of the society or the city. As it pertains to the Melrose Extension, I'll have to say that I'm a big property rights fan, so I would have to be completely sold on the fact that the people there have agreed to it and have been adequately compensated within the guidelines as, as the law recommends and provides for.
Great. I want to thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our questions. And I, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge and thank very much, not only for our panel for being here at this moment, but for being willing to take the time and effort and energy to run for this position. When only two of them are going to make it, we appreciate all of you for the dedication that you have made on our behalf. Can we acknowledge them, please? And we would like to thank you for being here. It's no fun answering questions to an empty room, and you've filled this pretty nicely, and we appreciate your interest. You're going to walk away here more educated, as far as a great voter. Don't forget to vote, and have an extraordinary day. Thank you.
Thank you.